Go ahead and call to order the, our open session for the City of Crescent City regular meeting for July 17th, 2017. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
I am here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No reportable action this evening.
All right, thank you. We will move into public comment period. Any member of the public is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include the placement on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire Council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county of residency for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. You will also be allotted an additional three minutes to speak on any item that is actually on the agenda when we come to it. Do we have any public comment this evening? Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, and we will move on into our agenda. We, under reports and presentation, we have the introduction and oath of office for our new police officer, Jonathan Cooper. Chief?
Still works. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. I come to warn you this evening to introduce the newest member of the Crescent City Police Department. A young man that came from my old neck of the woods of Southern California has come here to work and live in our community and enjoy the things that make our community prosperous and world renowned. So with that, I'd like to bring Officer Jonathan Cooper up and our City Clerk to minister the oath. With him also is his family, and during the badge ceremony, depending on, his mother will do it.
All right.
Mr. Cooper. Right. Does your hand over your heart? Raise your hand. And repeat after me. I, Jonathan Cooper?
I, Jonathan Cooper.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation?
That I take this obligation freely, and without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well, that I will well faithfully.
Okay. And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties which I am about to enter.
All right. Welcome to the team.
All right.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community, and I look forward to making yourselves proud of me.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, we will move on into our agenda. We have three items on the consent calendar, the special council meeting minutes from July 7th, the warrants claims list for the period of June 24th through July 7th, 2017, and the payroll report for July 10th through July 14th, 2017. Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Very good. We don't have any ceremonial items, but we do have a public hearing for, regarding delinquent sewer charges, and so I'll ask our Finance Director if you would please come and address this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is our annual public hearing for delinquent sewer charges. The action that we would ask you to take is to hold the public hearing, take public comment, and any protests that may be received, and then to take action on the resolution, which would be to file the delinquent charges with the county to be placed on the tax roll. This is an item that we bring before you every year at about this time. These are accounts that receive sewer-only service from the city. So normally, when there's an account that receives water service, if the account becomes delinquent, we can turn off the water. Obviously, we can't do that if they're only receiving sewer service. There's no way to stop providing that service once the, once they're connected. So when we have accounts that become delinquent, which is two or more months past due, once a year, we can place those charges on the tax roll with the county. It would be the amount of the past due charges plus a 6% administrative fee. You were provided with an updated list. The list that was originally in the agenda packet was as of last week. We've received several payments since then, so the updated list has removed a few accounts that have paid, and this is through today. I believe you also were given a letter that we received. There was one gentleman who's on this list who was not able to be here in person, and so sent a letter for your consideration. His request would be to be, to have his account removed from the list that's provided to the county.
Okay. You have any questions for Ms. Lever? Do, I do have, do you, I, I'm assuming that you saw the protest letter that was, that was sent in?
Yes.
Did you have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
From a standpoint of policy in the past, when we've had protests regarding this, how have we addressed those? Have we addressed them all individually?
It's on a case-by-case basis. There have been times when the Council has directed staff to, for example, work with a particular property owner on a payment plan. You can direct staff to remove those charges altogether if you feel that they shouldn't have been charged. You can pretty much direct us however you want on a case-by-case basis.
In this specific situation, did you, did you have any specific opinion regarding the protest as it was provided to us?
From, from what I gather from the letter, it seems pretty clear that there's been nobody at that, at that residence for some time. The city wasn't notified of that. Normally, we could have just closed the account, you know, at, at whatever point, but we weren't notified of that. So if, if your direction is to close the account for going forward or to close the account retroactively, I mean, we can do whatever your preference is.
So was this account on the list last year when it came through?
Yes. Yeah. I believe it's been on the list for a couple of years and paid through the normal property tax process. The gentleman did let us know that he did not receive the previous year's letters, so wasn't aware that this was happening.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
No, you asked my question.
Okay. I, I, it seems to me that this, the protests for Mr. Gardner at all, and it seems to be a valid protest, given the fact that the property is uninhabitable. So I would recommend that we, that we remove that account number 102980 from, from the list. Any other questions? Any public comment on this public hearing? Okay. Close public comment, bring it back to the council then. If someone would like to make a motion regarding the, the list, I would appreciate that.
I move that we remove account number 102980 from our sewer, Crescent City, City of Crescent City delinquent sewer accounts list.
And adopt this resolution.
And adopt?
For 2017-27.
And adopt the resolution.
Okay. Do I have a second?
One second, but it looks like Ms. Lever's about to correct us.
No, actually, I was just going to ask for clarification. You want us to remove that account from the list, but do you still want us to attempt to collect the amount due from him?
I'm just looking at the, in their protest. They've already filed Chapter 13 bankruptcy. It seems to me that, that the appropriate thing to do would be to close the account.
Okay.
Do, do they, do they still own title to the property?
As far as I know, yes. That's, that's how we got the address to send the letter.
I think it would be appropriate to, to continue to reach out to them to see whether or not there is a possibility of them voluntarily closing the account or settling the account in some fashion, but not to put it on the, on the property tax rolls.
Okay.
Okay. Is that, would that be all right with your motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay. And the, the resolution is 2017-27. So I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Very good. We will, let explains one, long thing here. Moving on into?
Public comment on that?
Yeah. Okay. Our agenda, the, oh, all the way at the beginning. We're gonna adjourn from the City Council and reconvene. As the Housing Authority will call to order, please note that Board Member, Vice, I guess it's Vice Chair.
Can I say something?
Yes, I asked for public comment. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I did not.
Okay, come on. Please identify yourself.
My name is Alan Orton.
Uh huh.
And I have a bill here from the city for $814.62 from 300 Washington Boulevard. And my brother-in-law owned that property and passed away, and my sister owned it and passed away, and I have had it. And there's never been ever any water hooked up to that or sewer. I've been going in there for over 50 years myself personally. And so I don't know how to do this. It's right behind the service station there on Washington Boulevard.
Okay. Then let's, we've, before we, I guess, finish our action. Okay, Mr. Orton, what we will do then is, is I'm gonna direct staff to, to research that with you, and realization that if in fact the sewer is hooked up, you need to be aware of that. If you didn't realize that, maybe your brother did, and you didn't know.
No, sir, it's never been. They've had that property 70 years. I've been going there, like I said, since I was 13.
Okay. We'll have staff work with you on that and address that, and I think that the Council's recommendation then would be to, to pull that at this time, but?
Thank you.
It may, it may go back on there if in fact?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as long as you understand that.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me talk.
All right. Thank you for making me aware of that. So Ms. Lever, did you, did you see the, the account that we're addressing here? Okay, so? Had we actually voted yet? Okay. So, Counsel, what's our appropriate, since I missed the public comment, I did not see Mr. Orton?
I think we need a, a motion to, to reconsider that item and then adopt the resolution with the updated amendments.
Okay. So I need a motion that we reconsider the previous item regarding the delinquent sewer charges?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so let's return this. We, we'll have two items, two individual accounts here that we would consider for being pulled off the list at this time for investigation by staff. So if you would like to make a motion again and identify, it's, it's this one right here. 104163. So, and, and then the other one, Garden, 122. Okay. All right. Mr. Greenow?
I move that we pull account number 102980, as well as one, account number 10413163 from our delinquent sewer accounts list, and approve the resolution to?
2017-27.
2017-.
27.
27.
27.
-27.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Any further public comment? We'll get it right this minute. All right, very good. Thank you. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Thank you, Counsel. All right, we will adjourn to the Housing Authority. Please note that, that Vice Chair Short is not with us. We'll call to order. We have two items, both on the consent calendar, the Housing Authority meeting minutes, and the warrant claims list of April 22nd through June 23rd, 2017. Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar for the Housing Authority? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, I have multiple seconds. Please pull the vote.
Board Member Greenow?
Yes.
Board Member Follman?
Yes.
Board Member Keim?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes. Thank you. We will adjourn from the Housing Authority. We do not need to go to the successor agency for any, for a lack of items. We will reconvene as City Council of Crescent City and move on to continuing business, which is number I-8 under, on your agenda, which is declaration for emergency for Harding Avenue. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. So what's for tonight is to fly a four-fist boat, continue the emergency declaration for Harding Avenue Culvert Repair Project. The good news is, it is, if everything goes right over the next couple of weeks, this will be the last time that the council has to take this action. The project has continued to move along since our last update, which was just a little over a week ago. The Hemmingson Construction has been hired. They poured approximately 250 millimeter feet of curd gutter and sidewalk. They have one access ramp left to pour. That'll be done tomorrow and the next day. The county will finish the road grading and structural section of the road later this week with paving set for either Monday or Tuesday of next week. We'll want to give the road a few days to, to cure, and then it should be open by the end of July. Councilmember Greenow mentioned where we're at as far as cost-wise goes. The invoices are still coming in, but at this point, I do think that we'll be under the $120,000 that was budgeted, approximately $105,000, $110,000, something like that, on the Culvert replacement side. And then the concrete portion, which the Transportation Commission allocated an additional $45,000 for, will also be under that budget.
Excellent.
All right.
Questions from the council?
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Weir? Very good. All right. Any public comment regarding the emergency declaration on Cooper? Harding. I did say that for a really long time. I did. No, no, no offense, Mr. Weir. You guys did a fantastic job, and you're still doing a fantastic job. Harding. All right, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the board. We need a motion and a unanimous vote for us to continue this.
I move that we continue the emergency action.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Very good. All right. We will move on then to our next item. Under new business, this is number nine, utility box mural program. We've been waiting for this for some time, and we've finally ready to, to hear about this in presentation form. Ms. Scott?
Mayor Enscore, Council, I'm lucky. I always get to do the fun ones.
There you go.
So, I bring no bad news to you. So basically, when I joined the city three years ago, the city manager at the time stated there had recently been a meeting to discuss graffiti problem in Crescent City, and one of the ideas born of that meeting that has been successful in other communities, the graffiti problem being on utility boxes throughout the city. And something that's been successful in other cities is to muralize those boxes. This has really taken off across California. It's huge in Glendale. It's huge in LA. There's a lot of South Lake Tahoe. A lot of great cities are doing this. So at the time, I researched it, talked to some of these other communities, put together a program, kind of put the feelers out around the community, and it just didn't seem like the timing was right. Resources being what they are at the city, always kind of tight, and, you know, a lot of other things going on with our artist community. Our artist community, as you know, has really picked up steam, especially over the last year, 18 months. There's a whole lot of momentum there and excitement there. A lot of things happening downtown currently, and so things have come to a point where it's coming together. So, we're gonna try to move this thing forward at this point. The program, basically, we got approval through Pacific Court. If you approve the agreement with them this evening to allow us access to those boxes, to allow our artists access to those boxes. There's a procedure laid out in the program that was given to you in the packet with some guidelines. Obviously, we don't want people putting things on there that we don't want to see. Want nice positive things. We want things that conform to our general plan. We have the three themes in our general plan: Redwood National Park, Seacoast Fishing Village, and Crescent City Historical Past. There's a whole lot of ways that you can interpret those three things, and hopefully, we've got a lot of great talent. We have several of them here this evening. You know, so we can have, we've already got a mural program downtown. We have a pamphlet and brochure, I'm sure that you've seen, where people can walk around and check these murals out. So, let me get my clicker. I don't know what I did with it here. Let me show you some of this. So not only does this allow multiple people to get involved with our community, we are recommending that the artists that do participate reach out to the youth in our community. You know, if you get the youth involved with something, then they take some ownership. They take some pride. So hopefully, they won't participate in graffiti in a bad fashion and, you know, re- recently going down the street with some of our local kids, some of the ownership that's taking part in our community, they were talking about how this is their downtown. So, we want to continue that feeling, so the kids feel like this is their community. This is some of what is happening in other towns. It's a lot better than those big, ugly, green boxes that we have. Four-hundred-and-seventy-five currently, if you can believe it within city limits. Some of those are little, and you may not notice them. I'd say there's probably fifty or so of them that are of a good size. Lots of cool things that people are doing. I kind of like the library drop box there. Wonder how many people it's full of. There's one of their flyers for their walking-around program. Kind of neat stuff. So artists can apply individually or as a group. As I said, they're encouraged to incorporate youth. So this starts with, it comes to staff. Staff looks and makes sure that it meets the guidelines outlined in the program. You know, we have things like, we don't want cuss words, we don't want things that are copyrighted, we don't want, you know, kind of your basic common sense, but somebody needs to screen for common sense. And it goes to Planning Commission to make sure that it meets regulation and general plan adherence. Pacific Court basset, at that stage, we also just shoot them a copy. They're very happy with the guidelines that we've laid out. Don't see any problem with anything going outside of that. They just want to keep a file on what's happening here. And then after it passes those two stages, it would come to you to make sure that it's, you know, pretty enough for our community, the style that you wish to see. And, you know, there are limited number of boxes. I don't know how much interest there's going to be, if there's going to be competition over these, or if we have plenty for everybody, but... Anyhow, I was going to have Mr. Isaiah Holcombe, and I don't think that he made it this evening. So he is the first artist that I talked to who's really interested in doing this, and he's kind of put together a program. I saw him speak at this youth outreach thing that Councilmember Keim and I were going through for Camp Fifty-One. And so he wants to work with youth. He's kind of a hip-hop guy. He's not the kind of guy that the city typically works with, but I think that it would be nice for us to hit some different demographics than what we usually hit. And so that's part of what sparked the interest to bring this thing forward again. Unfortunately, he's not here to speak tonight, but I think that possibly, Mr. Donovan? Come up and say a few words about this.
All right. Thank you.
Tim Donovan, president of the California Redwoods Art Association. I just found out about this today, but I want you to know that we support anything for the community in the way of culture and/or art, and I believe that this is probably a very good program to get involved with. And I will speak prematurely, because obviously, this needs to go before our board, but I think that there would be a vast number of our one-hundred-and-thirty-nine current members that would be interested in being involved, so...
You think some of the individuals that were so proactive in the Crescent City as Hart Campaign would be willing to do something that would be...
We can ask one, she's right there.
I know.
No, I believe that they definitely would. I think it would be an extension of that program, and we have some more ideas along that line, so I think that there would be a lot of enthusiasm from our membership as well as participation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan.
Just wanted to say one more thing, that, you know, obviously, we haven't set aside any budget for something like this right now. Materials do cost money. California Endowment does have several grants coming up here shortly. The application's due in August. I do want to apply for one of those community grants. It's ten thousand dollars to sort of kickstart this, if you approve this this evening. There's also, I spoke with Jill Munger this afternoon, California Endowment for the Arts has a grant program that she thinks would fit this particular program. So there are some opportunities for us to get some funding, so that we're not asking our artists to pull pennies out of their pockets in order to provide supplies.
Would we establish some kind of guideline for providing scholarship money to artists to do this? Have you thought about...
Sort of my vision for it would be, is that we kind of get an idea of what it costs to do a box, and the people that get approved into the program can have money to do their box until we run out of money. You can just keep applying for more money, but first come, first serve is what I envisioned.
Okay, so you'll get some estimates on what a box would cost, obviously, depending on the size of the box. I know that some of them are a little bit rusty. Is that something that can be painted over? And is this something that Pacific Power might replace before we get started on this program?
So as far as the rest, there is sort of some guidelines in the program. As far as, you know, you sand the box first, you primer it, they put the art on there, and then there's a specific kind of sealant that you seal the box with, and that makes for easy graffiti removal. Pacific Power, when I spoke to Monty at Great Link last week, they're really excited because they have a lot of graffiti on their boxes. This has been proven in other communities to be a deterrent. Of course, there is the possibility of damage to boxes, for some reason, that they may have to come in, that is outlined in the agreement. You know, there is the possibility that something would have to get removed on occasion. I don't think that would be, I think everybody would probably want to avoid that as much as possible, but...
I would think that painting them and sealing them would actually prolong the life of these boxes, so they might appreciate it.
You know, and there's also some guidelines too, like you can't cover up vents, you can't cover up identifying, there's numbers for the boxes. You can't use dark paints, because that's actually, I don't know if it overheats them in Crescent City, but, you know, in LA, it's overheated boxes. So we're not, luckily, we're not the first ones to go do this. It's been done, it's tried and true. There's somebody that's laid the pathway for us on how to do it, you know, maybe not perfect the first time, but we could at least get pretty close.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Is there any way to streamline the process of it, so it doesn't have to go from staff to a board to another board? Why does it have to go through this many levels?
You know, I think for staff, it's a quick review. It's five or ten minutes to make sure that it doesn't, you know, it conforms. Planning commissions really, they're the ones that really take into account sort of the environment that something's placed in. And as far as regulation adherence, if we were to cut it anywhere, I think it would be cutting the council from approving it. I don't know if you guys wish to give up, you know, seeing them and approving them. That's your discretion. I think that it's really important, probably the planning commission sees it, this is sort of what they do, so, yeah.
Putting the artist's hat on of just, I wouldn't want to wait a month. Like if you submit your project the day after a planning commission meeting, you're going to have to wait till the next planning commission, which is, I just see the deterrent happening.
I don't know, I would maybe defer to our artists, but I don't think that it really is that large of a deterrent. We want to do things right. These are things that are going to be there for a really long time.
Sure.
And, you know, getting it started may take a little time, but, you know, if we have people that are doing this, they're going to get into a pattern where they're going to do one or two of these every couple of months.
Okay.
Personally, I don't know if there's a way to speed it up without losing some quality.
Okay.
I think this is great. I mean, finding a way to beautify our town that's revenue-neutral? I think it's awesome.
Good. All right. Do we have any public comment? Any other public comment? Make sure I'm looking all the way around the room, I don't want to miss anybody. Yes, chief?
You threw around my hometown quite a bit, LA, and I'd like to throw the police department's backing on this project. Aside from the beautiful things that the artists do, this is part of community policing, and this is the community part. In Los Angeles, where I grew up, they did this a number of times, where we had, well, you don't have many of them here in Crescent City, or we don't, because this is my new town, freeways and overpasses and things, where they took it out to all of them, and they lasted for years. Back in eighty-four, in the Olympics, they had them out there, and they were graffiti-free because the people had pride in them. So this is a great project, and as the chief and as a member of this community, I support this and look forward to working with my colleague here and moving this project along. So coming from Southern California, this is a great project for our community, and I'm throwing everything I got into it.
All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
And this is Mr. Isaiah Holcombe that just showed up. I don't know if Isaiah, if you'd like to say a couple of quick words?
Hi.
Yeah, come on up here, introduce yourself if you would, and tell us your ideas about this mural program.
Yeah, it's called the Stupid Fresh Urban Art and Aerosol Workshop, and I just kind of want to, I just figured it'd be a great thing to put into play as a role model, you know, and it's just something to, I don't know, well, I got a little bit about it, what I'm going to share. Yeah?
All right.
All right. Sorry, it's been a hectic day.
It's all right.
Mostly working on this, though, so just so you know. Anyway, I got really nervous in front of people. Sorry, sorry, everybody. The Stupid Fresh Urban Art and Aerosol Workshop is an art class heavily influenced by hip-hop and what is more commonly known as the four elements of hip-hop. DJing, emceeing, breakdancing, and graffiti. The workshop will focus on different kinds of typography, letter connecting, flow, and hand-style development. The workshop is open to youth interested in learning or advancing their artistic and creative skills. So basically, I'm trying to appeal to the younger audience around here in a different way, rather than just the youth groups. So kind of capture their attention, because graffiti does have that criminal aspect to it that, you know, when people start getting off on that wrong track, they could, you know, but graffiti's appealing. So it captures the attention of some of the people that might be falling into the wrong crowds, and that's what I want to do. And hopefully, when they get into the class, not only show them graffiti, but show them how graffiti can be used in businesses and advertising, and make them work as a team. So teamwork, like pre-work skills, like critical thinking, entrepreneurialism, stuff like that. So that's just my idea.
Yeah. All right, well, I think it's awesome. I think anything that will engage our young people and give them a life pathway that's productive is good for all of us, certainly good for them. And I really appreciate your willingness to step in and bring a little different perspective. Look forward to seeing some of this work that some of our young people, some young people do.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other public comment? All right, then I think that from a recommendation standpoint, we need to approve the Power to the People Utility Box Mural Program, and because the other is an actual license agreement, do we need to take these as two separate actions, counsel, for the license agreement with Pacific Court?
You can, it doesn't really matter. You can do them together or separately.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve both those items, then we will move forward.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good, exciting. All right, number ten, modifications to the City of Crescent City Industrial Pretreatment Program. Mr. Weir? Come talk to us about BODs and suspended solids, my friend.
Yes, though, we've all been waiting for. So, yes, so the city staff, Tom Romesberg, myself, have been working on this, on this local limits revision for many months now. We've been working hand-in-hand with the regional board, as well as the federal EPA. In fact, they recently completed a pretreatment audit. However, Mr. Romesberg is the subject matter expert on this, so I will turn it over to him. He'll give the presentation, and then we'll both be here to answer any questions council may have.
All right. Mr. Romesberg?
Mayor Enscore and city council. I always get the best subjects.
You do.
Every time I come up here, it's sewer-related. So you've got the packet, maybe I'll walk through and hit the high points, and if questions come up, I'm here to answer them. So really, what's before you is the ordinance seven ninety-nine. It's the first reading. It's a two-step process to introduce and read by title only, and this is an amendment to the pretreatment, the local limits program, and it involves changing the local, the wording on the local limit, it'll modify provisions related to enforcement, penalties, and fees. So a little background on what local limits are. Local limits are required under EPA pretreatment requirements, which are imposed on Crescent City. So we're required to have this program. Part of that is, you establish local limits, and part of that process, you have to periodically look at it. So what is a local limit? Well, that's a limitation that we would set up of what gets into the sewer and what eventually makes its way down there to battery, to ten battery. And our current local limits, we have a list of, you know, items like, there's some interesting ones here, but things like copper, lead, nickel, ammonia, oil and grease, and then zinc, and two ethyl hexyl phthalate, I have trouble even saying that one. But we also have BOD. And BOD is, to try to explain that in some ways, biological oxygen demand, and that's one of the key things that our plant does, is we treat wastewater to reduce biological oxygen demand. BOD, if it's released to the ocean, what it does is, it interacts in the ocean environment, takes oxygen, kills fish, and so that's really what, it's an environmental protection. So BOD is one of the items we currently have a local limit on. What we want to do here is, and part of our reevaluation, which is required by the regulations, and also Eric mentioned, under an audit, we have to go back and periodically look at it. We looked at three fifty limit, and we go, is that an appropriate limit for Crescent City? And our evaluation was, no. What we want to do is change that limit from a concentration limit to a mass-based limit, which is a little confusing in itself. Concentration would be, something comes in at so many ppm. A mass-based limit would say you can discharge so many pounds per hour. So we looked at the whole program, and we came up with really three components of what we want to address in the change, and one is, change the concentration limit to a mass-based limit, and that'll be established on a case-by-case basis when we do an industrial permit, an industrial user permit. The second thing that we're trying to do here, and this is directly out of our audit, they said, well, you know, the local limits, the list, doesn't really have to be in your sewer use ordinance. What you can do is, you can carve it out as a standalone document. You can have it posted, have it in City Hall, and then you can amend it in a different process without going through the whole ordinance and the UNICODE. You can do it by resolution. So that, you know, that's basically responding to what EPA told us. The other thing that I think is important is Enforcement Response Plan. There's some requirements in there, and our current Enforcement Response Plan sets up a mandatory thousand-dollar fine for a late report for industrial use, and we think that's, you know, not appropriate for a late report. We're not talking about someone having a spill or harming the plant. This is just a paperwork. So the wording will be changed to up to a thousand dollars. So we're basically, we're making that a more prudent, reasonable, I think, combination. So all of this, you know, local limit business and the BOD is really what we're doing. It's getting consistent with what we see with a lot of the other cities, like Eureka. If you go down to Eureka, they don't have a BOD, they don't have a local limit on BOD, and a lot of cities don't. And that allows you to deal with BOD on a case-by-case basis. So what does all this mean for the city? I mean, one of the things I think it means is, we're trying to look at this plant and utilize it to the fullest extent to serve the community, to protect the public health, and serve the community. And one of the ways you do that is, we can, we have the ability right now with this plant to accept additional industrial loading, if we do it, if we do it in this fashion, because we can define, the key to it is, we can define when that BOD comes in the plant. Unlike residential sewage, right, we don't control, residential sewage, people flush, use, they do what they do, when they're going to do it, on their own time scale. When you set up the structure this way, you can define when the BOD comes in, and that's what the mass base and the structure allows us to do. That means we can capture more of the capability of the plant, and I think that's key to what we're trying to do here in the city. So this program is... So, this program is really came out, these changes, I think, are prudent, consistent with what others are doing. Uh, they, they come out of our, working with the EPA and the regional board. The regional board, I know you got a packet in there. It was very, it's probably long, very detailed, probably way more than you wanted to, to see in the topic. But that's all gone through, uh, review of the regional board and a technical approval saying this is consistent. This is how it's done and the approval of what we're trying to do here. So, that's really it. That's an attempt to try to explain it, but do you have questions that I can take? And if we don't answer them tonight, the second reading, we'll come back with a more thorough, you know, a more thorough response to a question. Do you have any questions?
Is this going to cost us anymore or any less? Or is it going to affect anything?
Little, little.
As far as our, our budget?
Little effect is, it's the cost of implementing is essentially a little bit of administrative work that we're doing, my time, a little bit of consultant time. But really, what it does is it allows us to put a structure in place that ultimately, we could, we could bring more industrial, we could have more industrial users treated at the plant. Now, this is, what we're doing here is, this is all about looking at, on an ongoing, the plant's a living, you know, it's a living plant. Things change. We look every year, where are we at? What's the loading coming in? What can we treat? And we keep reevaluating this. This'll allow us to expand that pie a little bit larger and, uh, and that's, you know, so this is, I think, is a plus. It's gonna serve the community more, potentially could bring more revenue in. And that's what we're trying to do. Trying to do all these things. Very simple. I know the regulations are confusing and complicated, but that's the nature of it. But it's, it's a good thing for the city.
Thank you.
Questions?
I think from, I, I think from an economic development standpoint, it's crucial that we address this. I think that part of the reason that we, this has come to the forefront is because of, we've seen economic development. We've seen some industrial use come in with the, with the, the opening and development of, of two breweries here that require us to address all these things. And by doing so, we're, we're putting ourselves in a position to continue to grow our, our local economy. We don't have a lot of, of industry here. And this is simply going to be an attractive tool that we can use to, from a community development standpoint, to go out to businesses and say, we're, we're prepared for you to come in and work and, and be a productive part of our community. And so, I think it's a very proactive way. We may have been reactive in getting here, but it's a very proactive way of moving forward from, from an economic development standpoint. So, I very much appreciate you and Mr. Weir's work on this.
Hey, a lot of work with the regulatory agencies.
Sure.
Yeah. And any other?
Any questions? Okay. Mr. Weir, you have anything that you wanna add? All right. I'll open up for public comment. We are waiving, uh, full reading and reading by title only, Ordinance 799. Um, and, uh, so, yeah. Just move on.
Hey there. Jovi Romiano, 511 Ninth Street. Romiano Cheese. I just wanna say, these two have done a great job. I mean, you look at the years past from our season assist order in 1974, is that right, Mike? And, um, you know, to where we are now. And I just have to say, these two have done an excellent job. I mean, you look at the, the sewer plant years ago and it was a mess. I mean, and it's taken not much time to improve everything. I mean, like I said, there's so many regulations. We're in the, the Republic of California. So, we've got, uh, literally more challenges than any other state, some countries. So, I just wanted to note that. And, uh, it's a real positive thing for our economy. I, I see us, uh, growing, you know, as a community with, with being able to do, do new things such as introduce breweries. Um, you know, I think that's an important note on the case-by-case basis, though, because there are some other, uh, chemicals and things that could go down the drain, you know, with different, uh, different types of industry coming in. Um, you know, we're, we're proactively working towards, uh, always improving wastewater. Uh, I think the whole community in the gen, in general is, uh, with all the industrial different people. One thing I do ask is if we, um, could have a little better communication moving forward, um, especially if there's some changes in, in these types of, uh, regulations and that so, and such. Um, just because, you know, it takes time for some of our operations to, to commit to some of those changes. But, uh, overall, it's a positive thing. So, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Not tonight. Mr. Mayor. Chris Howard, Alexander Derry. Extremely encouraged by the conversation taking place tonight. As many of us in the economic development community have had this discussion specific to our wastewater treatment facility for the last decade-plus, the changes have taken place have really led to a proactive approach that allow for that economic development to take place. With the expansion that Romiano Cheese has now completed and then with addition of breweries in town, like you mentioned, it really opens up the door to look at other aspects. And going at it on it at a case-by-case basis, I do encourage that approach. The interesting thing about it is I don't think this community's done. There's still a lot of agriculture around here to explore and specifically around processing. And my hope would be by the passage of this tonight, that some of the doors will be open to those agricultural processes in the future. Encourage you guys to support and continue that motion.
All right. Thank you. Other public comment?
I will just say, from an industry standpoint, from my perspective of looking at industry in our community and, uh, Jovi, I thank you for being here tonight. But the, the, the fact is, is that industry in, in Delmar County is set the standard by what Romiano has done, year after year after year. Not just here, not just statewide, but around the world, what, what you guys have done here. And I, we've had this conversation before, but I certainly make my commitment to make sure that this, this city continues to work with Romiano to make sure that those lines of communication are always what they should be. Because you're going to attract other businesses here by your success, which is unparalleled. So, thank you for being here and supporting this. And, uh, we look forward to what's gonna happen in the future. And that goes for many of our businesses. I see Miss Bedorek here. We've had a lot of people who have invested their lives in this community. And, uh, I still wanna believe that the best is in front of us. But that's, that's just my goals. So, thank you so much. Anything else from the council? All right. We are just waiving by, uh, full reading, Ordinance 799. We will be bringing this back at a next meeting. But if there's not any other questions or comments, we will move on. All right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Romesberg, thank you. Mr. Weir, appreciate it. Good work.
All right. And, uh, we are at number 11, the Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Program under the...
Mayor, we still, we still need a motion to introduce and waive the full...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, I have a motion to introduce and waive by full reading, number, uh, Ordinance 799?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Cohn?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Very good. All right. Number 11, Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Program under the 16 CBDG grant. All right. Ms. Lieber.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Okay, so, under the 16 CBDG grant that the city was awarded, uh, we were awarded $100,000 to put together a micro enterprise program. And what a micro enterprise program, technical assistance, does is provide basically business advising assistance to people who either currently own a micro enterprise or want to start a micro enterprise. And micro enterprise means that there are five employees or fewer. So, um, we did a lot of public outreach. We issued a request for proposals to see what organizations might be interested in providing this service. We did receive three proposals and we went through a selection committee, um, did interviews, checked references, uh, reviewed the proposals. And the selection committee came back with two of the proposals scoring very close to each other. Um, the, the proposal that was submitted by Morrison and Company was five points higher, uh, but out of a total of 500 possible points. So, the, the selection committee was not very clearly one way or the other. Uh, they did ask us to bring both proposals to you. Um, the third proposal was eliminated based on the scoring. So, what you have before you tonight are two different proposals. One from Morrison and Company and one from SBDC. They, either one would be eligible for the funding. Uh, either one is considered to be cost reasonable and to meet the national objective of the CBDG program. But they are two very different approaches for how to provide this service. Um, in a nutshell, the Morrison and Company program would select five micro enterprises and sort of take them under their wing and do a very intensive, uh, financial advising. They would, in a sense, they would act as the chief financial officer of that micro enterprise for the duration of this program. With the focus being on, um, the micro enterprise coming out of this program with financial stability, possibilities for funding if they need it, you know, applying for loans. Really focused on the growth and sustainability of just five micro enterprises. The other program, which would be run by SBDC, is a much broader approach. They would offer a wide variety of classes and technical support to a much larger number of micro enterprises. Um, but it's not quite as intense of a one-on-one, just pick five micro enterprises and see them all the way through type of approach. So, I believe we are going to have public comment. Um, we have representatives here from both programs. And of course, I can answer any questions about the CBDG side of it, um, you know, what the regulations are and that kind of thing. If you have questions or if you wanna take public comment first.
Any questions for Ms. Lieber before we... Nope? All right. We're gonna flip a coin? Or is first, first person to the mic? All right. We'll open up public comment then. So... Or we'll just flip a coin?
Good evening and thank you for having me. Um, my name's Toni Scott. I am one of three owners at Morrison and Company. And, uh, my business partner, Jeff, is here. Um, personally, I'm just really honored and blessed to be here tonight. I'm a Delmar High School grad, uh, former Miss Delmar County. So, it's always a pleasure to come back to my old stomping grounds. Uh, Morrison and Company is a business consulting firm. We, um, have 11 full-time professionals on staff. We focus primarily in meeting the business needs for small businesses and, um, primarily in food and agriculture, um, but also small businesses, um, in any industry. Uh, manufacturing has been a big industry for us as well. Uh, Jeff is a certified public accountant, CPA. Uh, we have four on staff who really work as interim outsourced controllers, CFOs, um, helping with financial projections, um, getting businesses stable. Um, that's one of the things that we see as small business owners is having that person that you have on your right-hand side when you need to know, do I take out another $5,000 on my line of credit? Um, do I hit up my mom to ask for money? Um, what, what are my dilemmas that I'm in right now? Am I at a position where I can hire somebody? Um, what are the laws around hiring? We, um, we are heavily focused in finance, um, but we also have a strong people resources team. We do interim outsourced, uh, human resources. I lead our grants practice, which is one of the reasons why this was on my radar. Um, so with that is ensuring that the city is meeting their eligibility in serving the appropriate micro enterprises. There is an income threshold and we have been a contractor on this in Chico. And so, the reason that we came in with five was because Chico's program could only meet five 10 a year that they could work with. So, that's pretty comparable, um, for what we thought we could do here. Um, trying to think, is there... Any questions? I guess I do, uh, one point I do wanna hit on, I, I think our proposal was, um, pretty responsive to what the city was looking for. Um, one of the things that jumped out to me was, um, City of Crescent City has lost about 100 businesses in the last 10 years. Um, that's pretty significant, about 20% of your, your industry. And, um, just having a fresh approach, um, maybe mixing things up a little bit, um, could have a huge impact there.
Questions?
What are your qualifications for these five micro enterprises?
Hey, we would make sure that we're meeting the guidelines as far as under five employees. Um, of course, anything that is federally legal. Um, we would be, uh, meeting the, the income guidelines, but really, uh, it can be anything. We, um, I kind of work on a daily basis from, uh, I have a client that's a billion-dollar company that's in, um, food and agriculture. Um, and I also have a client that I work with that, um, they are a, uh, construction company, uh, residential companies. Um, we, we pretty much run the gamut. We work with a clothing apparel company. Um, so, pretty much anything.
Questions?
If I can be blunt, like, why should we pick you over your competitor?
I think, uh, having the business expertise is something that, that we bring to the table. Um, like I said, Jeff and I are small business owners ourselves. We work in the daily pressure of running a business while also serving businesses. Um, you know, then there are things that come up. Um, you know, if we want a new sign, what are the regulations that we have to go through? And, and who's there to hold our hand to do that? Um, I sit as the, I'm the past chair of our Chico Chamber of Commerce. I also sit currently as the chair of our local planning commission. Um, so just knowing kind of how to work those, um, angles, uh, getting the right people in the right room. Um, we're very relational. Um, we drove six hours here for, um, maybe five minutes to speak to you guys and we'll hit the road and go back to Chico. But my heart's here, um, and we, uh, you know, we're taking cell phone calls and emails along the way. Um, so I think just having that resource where we're dedicated to pick up the phone and to help small businesses through. Sometimes it's, you know, you have two days and you're trying to figure something out. So, um, having that one dedicated person. Um, and we know what it's like to stay up late at night and wonder if you're gonna make payroll. Um, and wonder how, you know, should, should we be making it higher? Should we be moving? Um, those are the types of things that keep us up at night and that make us relevant to the clients that we serve.
The, uh, the, this process of one-to-one mentoring, uh, how, how long have you been doing this?
Probably handle this one. Um, Jeff Chenick with Morrison and Company. Um, I've been working in Morrison and Company for 10 years, all of which during which I've been a CPA and prior to that in public practice as well. Uh, my primary role in, in my work at Morrison and Company is to function as an outsourced CFO. Um, that could mean, uh, one day a month. It could mean just be on call for when I need someone to talk to at night, um, that sort of thing. Our clients are anywhere from a few hundred thousand dollars in revenue and below, up to, as Tony said, we have a client that's over a billion dollars in revenue. And we serve them in different capacities, so we don't serve them all identically. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna help them in areas where there's a value for them and give them, refer them to other resources in, in areas where someone else might be able to do better than us to help them out. Um, so, my background is, is a CPA and one of my primary functions right now is to serve as liaison between my clients and their banks. There's lenders. Um, many of my clients are in, uh, less-than-ideal terms with their banks and salvaging those relationships, rehabilitating those relationships. And, uh, Tony's, uh, background, not just as a grant writer and knowing the ins and outs of, of grant programs like, such as this, but also with their experience on this, on the planning commission and as, on chair of many boards, um, I think give us a unique set of, uh, skills to, to help, um, the businesses of city, as Crescent City.
I guess part of what I'm, and, and I, I like the idea of maybe looking from a little bit different perspective than what we've had here in our community. But I guess what I'm kind of looking at is, is, uh, maybe a track record of working with micro enterprises. Uh, I mean, is this gonna be a, I, I know you may have some clients that fit that, but do you have some history specifically in, in doing a project, program like the RFP that you guys submitted?
We do. And we, um, we do that in our own business. And then we've also worked with organizations that have received this grant in the past and have, um, received other grants. and have received other grants providing that business. So, one of those was one of our references, Three Corps, they're that economic development corporation. They had the microenterprise grant in Chico and we actually served as one of the contractors. So, what they did was, they administered the program and then they would contract out the relationships. So, we provided one-on-one technical assistance to, actually, two different apparel companies. One was in downtown Chico and one was in Red Bluff. So, that was our role in that process. We also work with a pretty large-sized agriculture co-op in Butte County. They primarily walnut and almond growers. And we were hired to do basically this. They had grant funding to allow for one-on-one mentoring and financing. Part of the problem with agriculture and, you know, pick your industry and there's fluctuations, but we saw an incredible rise with walnut and almond prices and then an incredible dip. So, how to manage that financially when you have, you know, your regular fixed expenses and then a bunch of farmers went out, bought a lot of tractors and land and so managing the finances with that. But we have, were written in that to provide up to 25 farms and ranches with just general technical expertise alongside that.
Great, thank you.
So, when you talk about ongoing needs, how long are you talking about? Like, once you get a business up and going, what kind of, I mean, I understand it's different. Sorry, I sound like this. I understand it's different every industry and business that you're talking about, but for these five microenterprises, what kind of ongoing needs, how long are you talking about?
Probably start and then maybe you could jump in and fill in the gaps, but you know, if it's somebody who's starting, it's, you know, at the very beginning, do you have a business license? Are you working out of your garage? Is this someplace where we're gonna need to find a place for you to rent? And are you, is everything up to code there? Do you have, you know, the appropriate number of parking spaces to, let's get you set up on QuickBooks? Is there anything that, do you need to make a hire? Are you paying all your city taxes? That sort of thing too. Maybe it's somebody that is right on that bubble of they're looking for expansion and they wanna go one way or the other way and they just need somebody to help them through. And I think it is different, but really, from what I'm seeing is a need to stabilize. And, you know, there are incredible stats on the number of businesses that don't make it past year three and then the number of businesses that don't make it past year five and then year 10. It's very rare to have businesses that make it past that. So, to learn from those lessons and to get to the point where you are seeing the longer-term businesses that are able to be stable.
The only thing that I might add to that is, you know, identifying what is it that you're going to do to help the business. I would, you know, we need to look at, do an assessment, what are some of the biggest needs and what are the timelines that we need to do them in? You're not gonna be able to fix every single thing that is just not feasible. So, what can we get the most return on our time for? So, do an assessment, what are the biggest needs? You know, is it, we need to hire, we're trying to write a job posting, but we're not getting any reaction? Are we putting in the right spot? You know, the simple things like that or, you know, our bank is asking us for these reports in pro forma, financial statements, but we don't know how to put them together in order to get this loan, things like that. So, that would be my general approach.
So, you'll have funding for basically working with these five, if you're selected for these five, for two years through October of 19. Do you, would you anticipate that there would be some of these clients that possibly then would become pay clients to continue using your services after that is, I mean, you've obviously have worked with people that have been grant applicants in the past?
Certainly, that is possible. That's not our objective here. In the program that Toni mentioned with, through Three Corps, we helped several businesses. Some did not continue. There was, there was one that did, that we have an ongoing relationship now. It's not, we're not gonna take the grant program as an effort to go out and sell our services. That would not be the objective. So, if it happens, great. If it doesn't...
Okay. Fair enough. Good, thank you. Okay. Mr. Graham? No?
Thank you.
All right, well, we may call you back up and ask you a couple more questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
So, the microphone has to go down. Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come in person. My name is Leila Roberts. I am the Director of the Small Business Development Center of the North Coast as of September of last year. And with me is, I live in Eureka, with me is Amber Weir, who is a lifelong community member. We both want to offer a couple of remarks about our proposal, but I think fundamentally, the thing I want to start with is, the Small Business Development Center has been operating in the North Coast, in Crescent City, in Del Norte County, and in Humboldt County as well and in adjacent tribal lands since 1984. We have served 450 income-eligible, that is to say, microenterprise income-eligible clients since the early 2000s. So, please understand that when we talk about what we think we know about what it takes to support this particular client group, it's based on that degree of understanding and experience. So, there were a couple of slight clarifications needed in the summary that you have read of our proposal. I really think it's important for you to understand that the core of our offering is the 12 to 14, that can be a range from anywhere from five to actually up to 20 or 25 hours of one-on-one confidential, no-cost business advising with an advisor who has run and started their own businesses and/or brings a particular specialty to bear, depending on what that client needs. I think it's really important to point out, we are not a school. The trainings are meant to support that one-on-one relationship. The second thing that I think you need to know is that our estimate of the number of microenterprises that we think we can serve is based on actual data. It's extrapolated based on past experience. We believe that a conservative estimate of 25 microenterprise clients entering into our program offerings, whether it's trainings or one-on-one advising or both, at some point in their development is a reasonable estimate for every year. That said, one of the hearts of the microenterprise program is something that we call the flights. We have the funding through CBPG in Humboldt County to be able to run these. And every time I put out an email or put up a flyer, I get calls from Crescent City and Del Norte saying, "When can we have ours?" These are programs grouped by industry or grouped by business challenge. For example, right now, we're running one for food producers. Very soon, we're gonna be running one for tourism-facing businesses. We are just wrapping up one for arts and craftmakers that are specifically focused on the needs, the development needs of those microenterprise clients. We take them through a three-month process that includes one-on-one advising, sometimes even more deep-dive advising, specialty workshops, and when they're done, they have relationships with us and with each other that experience tells us lasts long beyond the program. Once they have achieved a specific goal through this program, the flight or other, frequently our clients will go away and come back when they have any business challenge. We work with them directly to seek financing, to hire and retain employees, to increase their sales year-on-year, to deal with bookkeeping and cash flow and marketing challenges. And we use not just the advisors that we have contained here within Crescent City and Del Norte, but we are able to tap a core of advisors living in Humboldt County and across the Northern California region with a vast range of expertise. So, I really appreciate that though we were invited to provide the content for the CBPG proposal that the city put forward to the program, and I'm very pleased that it secured the city, the funding, I'm actually impressed and I'm rather glad at the discipline and the rigor of the evaluation process. I appreciate it. I appreciate the challenge and I think we're up to it.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah. Questions? So, if you identify and you're looking at from a data standpoint of estimating that you're gonna have 25 clients a year that you're going to be able to work with, what has your data shown that, how many of those are gonna end up in actual business?
So, in our experience, the majority of income-eligible microenterprise clients, five or fewer employees, are in the so-called pre-venture phase. That is to say, they have an idea, they have some resources, they have a strong skillset, and they're really interested in going out on their own. In our experience... Actually, do you have the folder? So, our startup rate, we're experiencing a startup rate dip since the employment figures have gone, since unemployment has gone way down, but it's averaging about 20 or 30 per year. That is across all income levels.
Okay.
The second group are the survival entrepreneurs who have an existing business. And these are folks who are doing something on the side to try and make up for a low salary through employment and who want to grow and who are ready to grow. And those we tend to take all the way through a program and they tend to show the best results because they are the most ready.
Because they already have a foundation laid. They just need adjustments to whatever that plan may have been.
Honestly, they are, I wouldn't call, but they need adjustments. They need every bit as much, one-on-one advising, close support, technical assistance and advice. It's just at a different level.
Okay. So, again, so, but we're not talking about 25 new businesses starting?
No. We're...
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah. I think that it would be reasonable to estimate that of those 25, within the first three to five years, a good 75% will have either decided to launch or grow, or been able to grow, or they will have found another way to earn a living. Sometimes we'll hear that people go through the program and find themselves successful enough to get a higher-paying, better job in the area. So, as far as I'm concerned, at least from the taxpayers' perspective or the city's perspective, that's a good outcome.
Okay. Questions? You read, you read everything.
It's a lot of reading.
All right. Anything else? Amber, you got anything you just, you walked all the way up here.
I did, I did. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. You know, I've been working for SBDC for 14 years and I've been working closely with this population for that amount of time, specifically to the, to the microenterprise grant. In my experience, the combination of the workshops and the one-on-one counseling is really beneficial. People, they're able to get mentorships and other supporting people in the community that they can lean on, if, and me. So, I really like the combination of the workshops and the one-on-one counseling that we offer. Also, I wanted to point out, you know, it is a slow process for these guys. I remember, I was kind of reminiscing on some of our clients that we've had, you know, six years ago, and we may have had them go through the flight and they decide, "Oh, this is a lot more work than I thought it was gonna be." And they regrouped and they are coming back now to us. So, we're a resource that they can continue to come back to and they know we're here for years on end. So, that's another thing I just want to point out, that we are a support system for them for continual, and we do have access to CPAs and HR and co-packaging and social media, all of those kinds of expertise that they're looking for. One of the challenges I see in that group is the ability to do the Skype meetings, even in our interview process. That was a challenge in our community. So, there are some considerations I'd like you to think about in that mentoring and one-on-one support with having somebody local. Did I hit anything else? Any questions about some of our clients that we have served in the past?
I guess not. Thank you.
I'm proud of them.
Good.
They've come back.
As you should be.
They're surviving.
As you should be.
Proud mama.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment before we bring it back to the council?
Something I'd point out, maybe Linda can correct me if I'm wrong. You probably should address the fact that the microenterprises are to be located within the city, and I'm wondering if both parties understood that. I think they should have from the RFP, but just to...
I'm getting nods, so.
Okay.
The microenterprises have to be in the city limits? Or the enterprises have to be at the city limits? Or does the, or does the entrepreneur have to live within the city limits? Or both?
So, the way it works is if it is an existing microenterprise, the business address has to be in the city limits. If it's somebody who's wanting service to think about starting a microenterprise, that person has to live within the city limits.
Okay. All right. That's, that's an important designation. Okay. Well, I think I'm absolutely clear why this was within five points on a 500 scale, because it's just two very different perspectives, hopefully accomplishing something very positive for our community, which is, I think that, I think that's the selection committee bailed on us. Put it on us. I appreciate the challenge. So, all right, I'll bring it back to the council and thoughts that you have. We need to engage in this and determine what action we feel led to take.
This is a very difficult decision to make because you have people who, in essence, are specialists, who stick with the people as they're going through the business process. And then, you've got over here, the quantity of more people getting trained in how to create a business. I'm not sure how I should go, honestly. It's a difficult decision to make.
Well, thank you for making it very clear, Mr. Graham.
I'm just being honest.
Welcome to this side of the dais. It's not easy, is it?
No.
Well, thank you, though. It is hard. It is challenging.
There's pros and cons to it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I like Amber's point of view that having an individual face-to-face local option is an asset, that's truly an asset. But I also, on the other hand, appreciate you choosing five eligible companies or microenterprises, rather, to really hone, hone in on those individuals. And that's a new strategy here.
Mr. Farman?
What I definitely don't want is for 25 interested people to go through some workshops and get some training, and then we have 25 people who just aren't interested in starting a business after doing this training. I'm leaning definitely towards Morrison and Company. I like their hands-on, they're gonna identify five people upfront and just work with them, or five microenterprises. That's attractive to me.
With the realization that you could work with five people and all five of them could decide they're not interested either?
Sure.
I mean, there's no assurances for any of this. We're trying to provide opportunities for people to be successful and especially from an entrepreneurial standpoint, and there's not any guarantees, and I think we all, we all know that, but I appreciate your thought.
That's the economy, yeah. There's no guarantees.
And I know that because, because this comment has been made a couple of times, I need to make sure that we're very clear that there's no local preference as a part of this. I know that we may have feelings like that, but from a CBPG standpoint, that's not part of our factoring in our making our decision. We're making our decision solely on the presentations that have been made and our belief in how to best use these public funds. It's just the way it is and, but since it's been mentioned a couple of times, I think we need to be very clear about that. So, if that's part of your decision, you need to set that aside and then go back to the proposals as they have been presented to you on their merits.
Knowing that the requirement for a new business is they have to be a resident of the city, that's a pretty stringent requirement.
Yes.
So I would tend to lean towards five, just working on five. I think we have a smaller pool of eligible businesses.
That actually does make a lot of sense. Of the 25 that you guys serve, what percentage live in the city? Do you guys know?
Come on back up later, if you would, please.
If you guys have those numbers?
Public comments unless you're in front of my sight.
That's right. Thank you.
Of course. So the projected 25 participants...
Is that Delmar County?
No, not at all. Not at all. That is a subset of a subset. So it is pulled from our database. I ran the figures based on the last time we did the program. And recognizing that we were able to serve between 30 and 50 last time, when the rules around location were much looser, I consulted with my colleagues who have been around longer, and we said, you know what, we need to go for a really conservative estimate for this two-and-a-quarter mile, square-mile patch of land. And so that's why we went for 25, based on the analysis of the data. I need to point out that these 25 people, some of them are going to go for training. The core of our offering is not training, it is advising. Anywhere from five to 20, averaging 12 to 14 hours of one-on-one, face-to-face time. You may contrast that with two, four hours at once of FaceTime with colleagues from Morrison who are coming up from Chico. It's a long drive. And then they're expected to consult remotely thereafter. Our experience is these clients really struggle consulting remotely, for reasons of cell coverage, internet access, and difficulty understanding complicated new concepts. Face-to-face, we have learned, really matters.
Okay. Thank you. Tony, would you like to talk about, I mean, maybe it would be helpful, you and Jeff, to talk about maybe some of the distance learning and instruction that maybe you have done?
Yeah.
Because I think that is a good question.
No, and so I believe if you want to turn, it's page 10 is where our scope of work starts, but really what we had in mind was more than, we built in a lot of face-to-face time. We travel a lot, face-to-face time with many clients. So they do include a workshop, a meet-and-greet workshop, with all relevant staff, based off of hearing concerns, Phase 1 mentoring, which would be four-hour initial in-person meeting, ongoing phone, email, and Skype. But I mean, certainly if there were needs that face-to-face would, we would build that in. But I mean, there's several aspects of that. Really what we were looking for with having this was just ease on a business owner. Coming from our perspective, I don't have four to eight hours to blow in a day, usually to go to a workshop, or to even meet with somebody. I'm kind of juggling everything else that's on my plate. So it was designed in a way where we can be most effective with meeting somebody's daily challenges. But certainly, I understand the need for face-to-face, which is why we built so much of that in.
You think, Jeff? I know you put in here, when you, under the estimated cost, talking about that you don't charge for administrative costs, but for mileage. Do you have a number that you would estimate that is just going to cover just travel costs? Under the scope that you have laid out with the visits that you're projecting, did you factor out what travel budget would be?
I did. I don't think I have that number recalled, because we did submit this in May, so I apologize for that. I also took into account my family's up here.
Sure.
So I am up here often. I also have family in Humboldt County that I visit as well. So kind of two birds, one stone with those visits of not, you know, not factoring mileage for time that, if I'm already up here.
Yeah. Just a question, in trying to look at, evaluate all of this, out of $90,000, if, you know, a third of that was in travel alone, or what?
No.
And not having that number, I just didn't know if you had any kind of idea of what your thoughts on that were.
It would not be a third.
Well, I've just...
I don't know.
I don't even know if it was a tenth, to be honest. But, yeah, I would, you know, I do really appreciate that, you know, and one of the things in putting together a bid, we wanted to make something that was the most cost-effective for what we were doing. We did come in lower, so that is just one consideration of what we, when we put together the bid, to be honest and conservative in what our fees were, but to recognize that the travel was going to be included in that.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
It's just, I think there's a reason that Morrison and Co. did score 1% higher, and, you know, if it was just as simple as, let's pick the local people, then...
Which we can't do.
Which we can't do.
Thank you.
But that consideration is there.
Don't say that.
I don't know if it was just that easy, though.
If it was that easy, and it's not.
And they weren't. So I think that speaks for Morrison and Company.
Okay.
And their qualifications.
Thank you. All right, well, we are at a point in time where if we're going to make a decision, we need to make a decision. If we're not, there is not another selection committee that you can hand this off to. So it is tasked to us to make a decision. And so if one of you has a motion to make, I will allow you to do so. And if not, then you're going to put it back on me, which is why I get paid so much more than all the rest of it. Does anybody have an action?
I move we select Morrison and Company to operate the micro-enterprise technical assistant program under the 16 CBDC grant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Ensore?
Yes. Very good. Good discussion, and thank you both for your presentations. We pretty much, very much appreciate, and we certainly appreciate the SBDC and the continued work that you have done here. We have businesses that are here because of your efforts, so I hope you do not take this as any slight on the work, the good work that you guys continue to do. So, but, all right. What do we have left here? I think we have something. Yes, we do, because I know that Bedorek is here.
Sewer refund.
Yes. All right. Sewer refund for sewer that didn't exist, if I...
A request from Jurinda for sewer refund. They've been paying for a number of years, and they're not hooked up, although they have contracted with a local engineering firm to put the sewer line in and to make the connection. We've gone back into the records and determined that we can, from the records, that the request for the refund that they've paid would be $5,551.38. Well, three times in the last year, a similar request has come up, and each time, the council has granted the request of full payment. And it's something that goes along with required under the state statute, and that, and somewhat of a precedent is set, those precedents can't be broken, or can be broken. I list them in the staff report. There was Sutton, there was Virginia Anthony, and then there was Wilson Hill in various amounts. Those three total around $27,000. Now, there shouldn't be very many more out there, but I don't know how many, if there are any. Well, there's at least one, that hopefully won't come, but I'm afraid it will. And what I'm suggesting is, considering the precedent that has been set, that the council approved payment to Jurinda, the amount that they have requested, the records of $5,551.38. However, to put an end to this, that we post a notice, or put in a duplicate, or elsewhere, indicating that if you have a claim for having paid sewer bills, and where you're not hooked up, that you speak up forever, hold your peace, and you do so by the end of the year. And that, beginning January 1, 2018, any refunds would be limited to that, that state statute requires, which is 180 days. Alternative would be if you decided now to hold to that limit, the refund would be limited to $369.94. So, but the staff recommendation is go ahead and pay full amount, that's what you've done. Although I don't think, I probably would not have recommended that the first time around, but that wasn't here then. So that probably doesn't need to be said, but I'm going to say it anyway.
All right. Okay. Any questions?
So, they don't have sewer hookups?
They don't have, they are not hooked up.
But we've been charging them.
But we have been charging them. Well, they've been paying, they have been paying. And a number of these started, how this happened, probably, in most of these cases, is that the county services area, when it went into effect in about 1980, '81, something like that, people switched over from subject tanks to sewer service. And people were then starting to, had to sign up for, or started to receive a bill for sewer service, for various reasons. Some places were paying that as if they had been hooked up, and they weren't. And Jurinda apparently would want to, you know, there was a sewer line close enough to them that they probably, maybe could have hooked up. I can't say for certain, because they are actually extending the line, I believe, about 100, 100 feet?
Yeah.
About 100 feet, and put in the lateral and to serve them. So they were clearly in an area that should have been served, you know, and so it was reasonable to expect that they were getting sewer service, because they were within the boundaries of the district, they were within an area where sewer lines were located, they were paying the bill, probably thinking that they were required to, the water bill, and lo and behold, they found out they weren't. It's been verified. They're actually, they've undertaken the engineering work to have the new sewer line put in and the like. So they've paid the bill, and they haven't had the service.
All right. We'll open up for public comment. Julie, do you want to say anything?
I don't.
Okay. I know. Yeah, yeah. No, that's quite all. Right. I think it's certainly reasonable, given our former actions and the specific situation that we refund the full amount of $5,551.38. I also agree that we need to draft a resolution to establish a policy that we are going to put a timeframe on this situation. And I think that giving people the rest of this year to come forward, if in fact they have a claim to do so, seems responsible, from my standpoint.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the payment, and then we can direct staff.
I would like to make that motion, that we fully refund Jurinda, and certainly refund you the full $5,551.38 for overpaid or unnecessarily paid sewer fees.
Thank you. Have a second?
Seconded.
All right. I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Mayor Ensore?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We are at the end of our agenda. We do have some city council items from a legislative, under legislative matters. The League of California Cities Annual Conference is in September. We need to identify a voting delegate. I spoke with Mr. Follman today, and he's not going to be able to attend. And so I don't know if anybody else can verify, it's September 13 through the 15th, can verify tonight that you definitely can attend and want to be the voting delegate. The advised date is the 31st, but that's not the actual cutoff date for our delegate, I don't believe. Ms. Scott, do you know what the actual date is that we have to have this mailed into them or identified?
I believe that the absolute cutoff date is a month after that. However, I will caution you that the event books up very quickly.
Yeah. Hotels do.
Yes. So if you don't make a decision fairly soon, you probably will not get in on the conference rate hotels, and this event has sold out in the past also.
Okay. It looks like I got to the form. It has to be in by September 1st. I think that if we, if you all look at your, if the other two of you, Mr. Short informed me that he was not available as well, look at your calendars and let me know if it's something you're interested in or want to do. We need to, if we could, Ms. Scott, please push this to our next agenda, and I will make an appointment, one way or the other, or we'll simply not have a representative possibly. Mr. Young, do you have any thing for us from the city manager's standpoint?
Only one item, just informational for you. The Vet Monument, they're proposing the groundbreaking this coming Friday at 11:00. Supposedly they're going to get invites out. I don't know if they've been delivered yet or not, but I was told that last week, and reminded of it this morning.
Friday, 11:00?
This coming Friday, the 21st, 11:00, at the S-Curve, groundbreaking.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent.
So we'd certainly invite the public to that, if you're watching or watching this afterwards, to this Friday at 11:00 a.m. at the S-Curve for the Veterans Memorial Monument, groundbreaking. We'd certainly like to see you there. We do have one item. We, the delegation from Rikuz and Takata is scheduled to be here the first week of October. We are in consultation with Chairman Howard and the Board of Supervisors. We are looking at the possibility of doing a joint meeting of the city council and the Board of Supervisors on October 2nd. It may mean that we have to move our regular business for that meeting to another time so that we can free up that special meeting time, but I'd like consensus from the council that we, that we make that October 2nd meeting a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, if that is...
I would agree with that. We'd do that.
Yes. Yes, yes, of course. So we do have consensus that we will do that, and if staff will begin looking at scheduling as we approach that date for items of business that will need to be dealt with, and if we need to schedule a special meeting to deal with those, I would much prefer to put some of those things off onto a special meeting, and set aside that meeting for a very, very important and monumental visit of the delegation from Rikuz and Takata, including Mayor Tova and Chairman Ido will be here. So, plus, it has been, it has been quite some time since the city and the county have had a joint session together. Matter of fact, I don't think that there has been one in the time that Chairman Howard and I both have been elected, we have not had a joint meeting. So this will be, that will be monumental as well. So, okay. Council, you want to report out if you have anything, or if you're tired, you just want to say, "I was busy"?
I was painting.
You were painting, okay? Very good.
I was painting my grandparents' house.
Painting your grandparents' house. Very good.
I did not have any meetings.
No meetings. All right. Councilmember Kine, you're obviously feeling better, we're glad for that.
I don't sound better, though.
But, you know, sounds are relative.
My kids are enjoying this.
Okay. Anything that you'd like to share with us since our last meeting on the 7th? Anything that you'd like to share with us since our last meeting on the 7th?
I don't. I have not had any meetings, and I just attended some weddings and had some fun out of town. That's about it.
Okay. Mr. Follman?
The only update I have is that I was at the Delmar Transportation Commission meeting last Wednesday. The traffic count for the 199 Elk Valley Crossroad area is being conducted this month, and there'll be a site visit by the project delivery team for Last Chance Grade.
All right. Very good. All right. We had an oversight board of the successor agency of the former redevelopment agency, which we don't have an acronym for, because there's way too many letters. We did have a, I attended the Chamber Mixer at the Economic Development Corporation, and we had an ad hoc law enforcement meeting with county, the sheriff, and the chief of police, and had some good conversation there. So, I don't think that, I don't think I have anything else. We are going to be a journey from regular session back into closed session to complete items that we were not able to finish prior to our meeting. We do not anticipate that there will be any actionable items that will be coming out of closed session, but if you just want to sit here and wait to see us when we come back, you're welcome to do so. We'll take five or six minutes here, and then reconvene in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We are adjourned.